Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council meeting of February 22nd, 2023. It's great to see so many people here. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. We have the pleasure tonight of having Pastor Treco Matthews, who's a senior pastor of the Church of God, to offer the invocation. He was recently installed, and it was a pleasure to participate in the installation. Following the invocation, we'll have Adita Karkala from Stockdale High School, who will lead us in the pledge. He is a youth commissioner for Ward 5, Councilmember Freeman's Ward, and is on the tennis team, Spanish Honor Society, and meth club, and debate team. So would you all please stand now?
Great to see you all. Let us pray. God, grant us the serenity to accept the things we cannot change, courage to change the things we can, wisdom to know the difference. As we seek to govern righteously and justly, Lord, I pray that you give us the wisdom to know what things should be changed, where we should advocate, and the courage to follow through on our values. It strikes me today that today is Ash Wednesday, and as we think about Jesus's sacrifice, I pray that you give us all hearts and minds to be willing to serve and to sacrifice for the good of the many. We ask all of this in the name of Jesus, in God we do trust. Amen.
Amen.
Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Thank you, Pastor, and thank you, Adita. We appreciate it. Commissioner. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones, please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos, and for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting. We don't have one of those today, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting or prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in the expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience, or surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, the next item, please.
Public statements.
Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and for items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar constitutes, as a whole, one item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues, however, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act. The council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's agenda?
Mayor Go, we received one speaker card for items listed on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Would you call that person forward, please?
Michael Turnipseed.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Michael Turnipseed. I represent the Kern County Tax Payers Association, and I am going to talk about BPDs since it's on the agenda tonight for an item. I am handing out handouts and gets back to the back about customer service, and I think this contract was for artificial intelligence to improve responses. I just saw it briefly today. It was under AI, whatever AI stands for. But the idea is, I just sat through an hour and a half discussion that was probably one of the most detailed back-and-forth discussions I have seen in all my years watching. You're talking about streets. Were these discussions about crime, homeless, I mean, meaningful conversation between the council members back and forth? That was quite the best meeting I've ever attended in this room, so give you credit for that. But we must address how we deliver our services. We can no longer think that we can have 13 goals for Measure N and put Band-Aids on everything when we need to have surgery to save the patient. And that's your job, to determine what issues require surgery and major investment, and prioritize our investment, because you don't have enough money to spend on solve all of Bakersfield's challenges. You just, you can pass Measure N three or four times, and you're not going to be able to solve our problems. So I will say, that's it. Thank you very much, and I will be back in under public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public statements, non-agenda items.
Thank you. Would you please call the first public speaker?
First public speaker is Resendo Sobranos.
And just go ahead and say the next one so that person can get ready.
Followed by Brianna Keller.
Thank you. Go ahead and lower the mic. Welcome.
Hi there. So I'm here today from the north, sorry, the east side of Bakersfield, specifically in North Larry and Jeffrey, we're two blocks away from the casino. Well, that was raided on 700 block of North, I'm sorry, of Iron Street and North Baker.
Can you get a little closer to my mic, please?
As Greg Terry said, the police chief basically addressing that those commuters were harassing the neighborhood. I am a victim of that. On November 2nd, there was a robbery next door. I aided it by following the perp down the street and to the casino. The following day, on November 3rd, the raids were conducted. I don't know if it was an act based off of what I led them to, but, you know, that happened. So on December 8th, what I listed in the speaker's card, I was arrested for churning in evidence and, I guess, quote, wasting resources, which is penal code 69. And so I was arrested basically turning in the same evidence I had turned in on November 3rd, I'm sorry, November 2nd, which was false. A sergeant commanded the deputy to arrest me. I did recede back into my home out of fear, not out of to make it harder for the deputies to make an arrest. Following that, they did break in. They did take me to custody, but they did more than just that. They did harass me. They did, I guess you can say, they used excessive force, and then to the point where they were almost going to rape me. So when I was taken outside, one of the deputies mentioned that thanks to BPD, this was 100% they could have done it. Whatever that meant, I'm here to address the situation of, I guess you can say, the history of what Kern County Sheriff's deputies have using excessive force. Now, I'm just wondering what the BPD's side, what did they do to assist that? He said it's doing the raids down the street, which were two blocks over from my home. So that's all I have to say is pretty much.
Thank you, Mr. Sobranos.
Brianna Keller.
Welcome.
Hi.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm Brianna Keller. Since 1995, my family has owned and operated a small-town costume shop, Fantasy Frogs Costumes, on 17th Street. We're also lucky enough to live right next door to our business. I'm here to speak with you about the abandoned and neglected property on 2011 18th Street, the Fountain Plaza, which sits behind my business and my residence. Over the past 25 years, this property has sat vacant and neglected. It has been set on fire countless times and has become a homeless encampment. In over 25 years, the owner has refused to do anything with the property, knowing the risk it's posing to the lives in the community around. This week alone, the property has been set on fire, not once, not twice, but three times. On the third time this morning, at approximately 1:30 AM, I awoke to the sirens, the saws, the yelling, and ashes and embers falling all over my business and my home. I was scared. I feared for my safety, my family's safety, and I feared I would lose everything my family has worked so hard for. I quickly ran to my business, and within two minutes, my backyard was up in flames at my business. Thankfully for our awesome fire department, they were able to put it out before it spread to the building, but not before leaving thousands of dollars in damages and cleaning expenses, and not to mention the emotional toll that this has taken upon my family. This owner has had over 25 years to fix and repair his property, but yet knowingly leaves it a danger to lives and the livelihoods of our community. I'm now asking you for help. What is this going to take? Someone losing their life, businesses burning to the ground, injured firemen? When is it enough for the city to step in and do something about this? Thank you.
Thank you. So sorry for your loss. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Brianna, thank you so much for stepping up and speaking today and providing your testimonial to all of us. It is important for us to hear, all of us on this dais, and for city staff to hear your story and your real experience. There are far too many fires throughout Bakersfield in vacant structures, and we must do more, because it is a public safety issue. It is a safety concern, as you so eloquently pointed out, to the surrounding businesses, residents, people who are living and trying to get by in those neighborhoods. And there are far too many vacant structures in our community. It's been three years since I made a referral related to the city establishing a toolkit to address vacant structures and chronic nuisance properties. It's been a while since I've been requesting that the city bring to this council an ordinance related to a vacant property registry, so that we can have a toolkit, basically, this registry will allow us to understand where those properties exist that are and that have been vacant for more than 30 days, and for us to then proactively monitor these properties, ensure that they are up to code, ensure that they have the proper security, and that we are preventing fires, preventing issues from occurring before what happened last night and this week. It is very frustrating to hear that there have been three different fires this week at the same property. It is very frustrating. And I know there's folks within City Hall and code enforcement themselves are very frustrated, but there's something systematically, system, systematically that's not working, systemically that's not working, and we have to fix it. And so I'm going to make a referral yet again to planning and development to take up this issue, this single issue related to a vacant structure registry in the city of Bakersfield. And I know it came up to planning development last year, and there were some reasons as to why it wouldn't work, and it wasn't perfect, but, you know, in reality, nothing will be perfect. But we need something that's going to be effective at us getting ahead of the issue before we witness even more fires in various different parts of the city, properties that have already caught fire. We just, we just have to get a handle on this, and we have to do far more and far more quickly. So I'm asking Planning Development Committee to please take this up sooner than later. Thank you.
Councilmember Gray.
We just addressed this in the last few months in planning and development and changed some wordage in our ordinances and fast-tracked what we could do with these nuisance properties. We took the time to do that. So that has been done. So either Mr. Clegg or Mrs. Gennaro, if one of you could bring the public up to date in this woman, and I do, I'm a business owner too, and I can't even imagine what you went through, so I'm very sorry, and I'm glad that you didn't lose at all. That's the blessing in it, but this shouldn't be happening, for sure. But we have been working on it, and we have brought things up to date. So I think it would suit everybody well here tonight if we can bring you up to date.
Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray, and Mayor and Council. We have been developing a chronic nuisance property toolkit over a number of years. I'll try and summarize quickly some of the elements of that toolkit. We actually began with revising some of the abatement process, and so we have the ability to go and do code enforcement, abatement on properties that aren't proactively addressing, you know, weeds, debris, and other issues in their homes. But it's a small fraction of the chronic nuisance challenges that we have, so we continue to develop other tools. We have, excuse me, updated our ordinances to include language that does create a fast-track for chronic nuisance properties, to be able to abate those properties more quickly. We have actually developed a scoring system for identifying properties that have had repeat fires or repeat code enforcement offenses, and the city has set aside funding out of the ARPA American Rescue Plan Act funds to try and go and purchase those properties to move more quickly on rehabbing and getting them back into productive use. A couple of years ago, we started testing out the receivership process, which is a process where homes or buildings that are a chronic nuisance can be essentially, authority over those properties can be granted from courts to a third-party receiver who tries to get them back into productive use. But we have found several of these tools to be cumbersome and slow, and so we're trying to find additional tools to speed things up, and that's part of why we pursued the purchase program. And I will reflect that it has been a lengthy process in developing some of these updates, as well as trying to deploy these ARPA funds in a program that, you know, has never been tried before in this community. And so I would reflect that, yes, many efforts have been in place. I will agree that none of them have been sufficient and that we do need to do more. I think we've been adding on pieces to the toolkit, and I would actually suggest there's one additional piece that we've yet to develop, which is a lien forgiveness program, where we could forgive liens against properties that are keeping them from turning over to get them back into productive use as well. So we do have more work to be done, but have been building out this toolkit over the last few years.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Michael Turnipseed. Followed by Linda Evans.
Welcome, Mr. Turnipseed.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Mike Turnipseed. Change of script. We just heard an example of a problem that's been going on for years. Properties' fires have been going on for years. That affects the fire department. That affects the police department. That affects everybody. It should be a top priority. But in all the years I look at your budgets, in all the years, I don't see any, this is our number-one project we need to solve. There needs to be that kind of focus on some of these basic challenges the city has. They're not getting better. We're just putting Band-Aids on them every year. It's your job as councilpeople to find the best practices possible and make sure that the staff is doing it. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Next speaker, please.
Linda Evans.
Welcome, Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, and staff for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Linda Evans, and I've been part of the Technology Services Department of the City of Bakersfield for the last three years, and I am a member of the SEIU Local 521. My department provides support to every department in the City of Bakersfield and some services directly to the public, like the Bakersfield mobile app. We manage software and devices that each department uses to do their job. From a single cellphone for communication and documentation between workers out in the field, to an internet connection, computers, and radios to dispatch an emergency call, we, just like every department in the City of Bakersfield, help the City of Bakersfield really be the sound of something better. Just in my department alone, I have seen at least 12 technology services employees leave for better pay. Each one of us is an investment with education and experience that are key to keeping the City of Bakersfield working and providing needed services to the public. The combined total of years of service spent at the City of Bakersfield for those 12 is nearly 100 years collectively that has been lost due to poor wages and unmanageable workloads caused by employees leaving. For some of you on the dais, my face is familiar, as I've had the honor of providing technical support for the city council meetings from time to time. I've seen with my own eyes how much you all care about the city and the people that live here. We need council to ensure we can continue to provide quality services by investing into our workforce today. I join my coworkers, and we are demanding an answer today to address our retention crisis, a full economic proposal, and a fair contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Next speaker, please.
Lisa Smith, followed by Juan Salazar.
Thank you. I came to you all a little bit around Christmas time with an issue that I was having with all of the new freeway construction, and about a month later to say, nothing happened. I'm here today to tell you publicly, as I have before in public, something happened. They got the fence put up around the lot that was two blocks from the school, so children can't go through there anymore. Not only that, they somehow managed to climb the 30-foot berms that they couldn't get up before because it was too dangerous, and they cleaned all the graffiti off of it. This is my little corner of the world, and I'd love to tell you everything's wonderful, but I was out on Monday, just kind of, because I drive my neighborhood and do things, and saw two little girls on a purple minibike riding underneath the bridge, because it's not fenced off. They were driving around three adult men that were hanging out underneath the bridge for I don't know how long. So yeah, it's gotten better, and I want to publicly thank the city manager's office, Gary Helen; Public Works, Louis DePete; and the trip office, Robbie Pudapetti, for their work in getting it cleaned up. I think the only thing that's going to fix this is two things. One, it's going to get done, and when it does, the city has told me that they are going to take over these over crossings throughout metropolitan Bakersfield rather than turn them over to Caltrans, which would have been a nightmare for the people that have to live underneath that bridge. I think getting it done is going to be the biggest thing. I'm here to ask you, in addition to publicly thanking the people who helped so much, took a while, but we got it done, I'm here to ask you, when you start building those freeway interchanges we've all been reading about in the Bakersfield Californian, that you remember what we lived through and don't let it happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next speaker, please.
Juan Salazar.
Welcome, Mr. Salazar.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name's Juan Salazar. I'm a construction inspector in Public Works and SEIU member, 521. I find myself once more here with hopefully your attention this time to a priority of utmost importance, a priority that affects the day-to-day ability to provide a stable, healthy, and livable life for not only us, but many of the people that depend on us in earning a fair and livable wage and environment. I humbly ask you who sit there a question that I pray you will ponder after this session is done. Are we, the employees of the City of Bakersfield, important enough to receive a fair wage? Have we been given any thought since our last agreement over six months ago? Are we being taken for granted? We've patiently waited for responses to our proposals for better wages, the ability to compete with other companies in obtaining the best and most talented individuals for the betterment and continued growth of our city, all for naught, it seems, as our patience and proposals have been met with everything but the respect and priority it deserves. My father taught me many important things in life, but one that is embedded in me is to never shy away from hard work and always fight for what I believe is the right thing to do. This is the right thing to do. That is why we are here tonight, united in our conviction and our strength. We're here for action and answers, and we're tired of waiting. We've waited for over six months, and we can't wait any longer. Think about all those people sitting here and outside and the hundreds that work in this city, in the fields and in the offices that have been waiting for a fair contract and ask yourselves, what would you do in their stead? In closing, we're done having the can kicked down the road. We demand action be done. We're here to show you we're united in our frustration. These men and women and voting constituents look to you, our councilmembers, and look forward to your actions. I join my coworkers in demanding an answer to our retention and wage crisis, a full economic proposal, and a fair contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salazar. Next speaker, please.
William Bailey.
Welcome, Mr. Bailey.
Excuse me, it's on my, it's on my phone. I had to read off my phone. The typewriter was broken.
It's okay.
All right. This is regarding the City of Bakersfield, the cost-of-living raise. Hello, my name is William Bailey. I'm a service maintenance worker in Streets Department for the City of Bakersfield. I officially hired on with the City of Bakersfield on November 14th, 2005, after initially starting as a temp at $13.90 an hour. At that time, minimum wage was $7.50 an hour. That was nearly twice minimum wage at that time just being a temp. Today, I make $24.20 an hour as a street maintenance worker, and California minimum wage is $15.15 an hour. That's less than twice minimum wage after working for the city for 18 years in the same position. Yes, the same position. This is one reason why we can't retain people, along with retirement being cut among new hires. The high turnover rate for employees is costly, counterproductive, and unsafe for the public because we can't keep people. We always get new people, and then they don't really know the routine and the learning, and it's just not safe altogether. It's not right, and it's not fair to the city employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Next speaker, please.
Tommy Tillery.
Yes.
Welcome, Mr. Bailey.
I just want to thank you.
Tillery.
Yes. I just want to thank you for intervening on my elder abuse thing that I talked to you about.
because we can't keep people. We always get new people and then they don't really know the routine and the learning, and it's just not safe altogether. It's not right and it's not fair to the city employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Next speaker, please.
Yes.
Welcome, Mr. Bailey.
I just want to thank you.
Tillery.
I just want to thank you for intervening on my elder abuse thing that I talked to you about. And Wednesday, last Wednesday, was a court date. I did all the paperwork that was necessary. I dropped it off at the sheriff's office. And when it came time for me to go to court, the judge didn't have the papers. She told me so, so I'm like, okay, I understand now. So I want to thank you and apologize for wasting your time, and I won't call 911 no more with any problems I have because nothing ever gets done. And I've been still being abused and it's been months, so I want to thank you for trying. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tillery. We'll follow up with the appropriate people. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments 6A. An appointment of one member to the Bakersfield Public Safety, Vital City Services Measure Citizens Oversight Committee due to the term expiration of Ken Keller, Ward 3.
Thank you. This appointment is by Ward, so I'm going to call on Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. I am pleased tonight to propose Clayton Campbell serve on our PSVS Oversight Committee. Clayton is a prominent attorney in town. He is--
Councilmember Weir, maybe just wait until we have a chance to clear. Thank you to all of our workers and all of you guests for just being so courteous. Officers, if you can close the door when the last person leaves, please, that would be great. Thank you. Councilmember Weir?
Thank you. Again, I would like to nominate Clayton Campbell. He's a practicing attorney here in town. And after reading his bio, I can tell that he is definitely supports thrifty and responsible use of funds, so that's my motion.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion was unanimously approved.
Thank you. And Mr. Campbell, thank you for your willingness to serve. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is consent calendar, items 7A through 7AK for approval. We have received staff memorandums regarding item 7A, transmitting corrected minutes from the February 8th, 2023 special and regular city council meetings. Item 7M, transmitting a corrective resolution. And item 7Y, transmitting a corrective title.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Freeman, comment before?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I don't want to pull anything from the agenda, but I'd like to make a request of the city manager. Since I've been on the council, and I imagine it's been this way for years, there are always a great number of expenditures to be approved on the consent calendar. And many, many of them say, we're bypassing the normal bidding process and we're just going to go because only one vendor can provide it. I'm not saying it isn't legitimate, but there are so many things of large expenditures that I don't really know what they are a lot of the time or why we need to spend them. And it's my ignorance, but as a council member, if we're going to spend more than maybe $75,000, maybe 100, but, you know, see a tractor, $450,000, I go, God, how can a tractor cost? And we're not even going to do bidding. If we could get a memo, something on-- you could get back, now watch the right threshold. I'll say over $100,000. Something where you ask us to approve spending over $100,000 just with a little paragraph, sometimes it's a little longer, sometimes very short. What is it? Just for my edification, and I don't think I'm totally alone up here, that a lot of time we have $400,000 for something to do with an air conditioning system, maybe at the convention center. It's just a lot of money, and we go, you know, we spend millions and millions on every council meeting and honestly don't know what I'm voting for a lot of the time. It isn't that I don't trust people. I just feel kind of, you know, that I have a responsibility to know a little bit more of what I'm voting for and $300,000 for a street improvement project or, I think it was last time, $180,000 to finish up some park schematics on MLK Park. What schematics? I thought we already-- So I just feel ignorant on a lot of this stuff. And if you could just give a little short memo that we get before the meetings that just say, this item, this, and, I mean, it can be small, it can be explained, but just, I don't know what most of them are, and I know constituents will ask me, and I just kind of say, I don't know, I just approve all these millions of dollars every two weeks, and I really don't know what I'm approving. It would just be helpful to me, maybe over $100,000. You just gave us a few lines on one little page that said, hey, this is what this is and why we can't even open it up to bids. We can discuss it later if you think that's a bad idea, but I would, I'd appreciate that because I just don't feel comfortable when I keep voting for all these expensive items. And I honestly, I don't know if I've-- I don't know what they are, I don't know if it's the right price, or-- and I'm just ignorant on a lot of these things, but, you know, why these things cost so much. So you can get back to me on that, but I'd appreciate it.
City manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember. I'll touch base with you offline to make sure I understand the specifics. Is it just mostly sole source or any over a large number? And I don't think we need to get into all that detail, but we can touch base with that offline. I think there's a couple different ways to get at that. We could do a memo for those that, you know, reach a certain threshold. I think also, though, the admin reports for, you know, each of the items is a great place. And I think we-- I'll circle back to where this connects, but, you know, we've actually asked Moss Adams and some of their risk assessment follow-up to look at our procurement policies because some of those purchases that are above the $40,000 authority that is our current threshold, some of those have become far more routine actions just as the cost of doing business increases. And so you probably don't, you know, want the same level of detail on every one of those more routine purchases, but we have lots and lots of those filling up our agenda. And one of the things I think we could do is adjust our administrative threshold to really bring those items that are more substantive to council, but then increase the amount of information in our admin reports as opposed to separate memorandum. But we can talk through the pros and cons of that offline, but I hear your message. We've actually been talking about internally, how do we make our admin reports have a little more substance and also connect better to our city council goals to reflect how does this item deliver towards a city council priority or goal? So I think there's work to be done there, to your point, and we can clarify offline the best way to get there.
I don't want to create a lot of bureaucratic work for you. But one of the things that it will give me assurance, if you write three lines on why we, you know, paid $416,000 for this new bulldozer, it will be, I know you then really thought about it, and you probably asked the guys down there, why does this cost so much? But it gives me a feeling that you really paid attention to that. Not that you don't, but it makes me feel better that I know you might have asked that question. These seem kind of expensive to me, too. You know, the old military saying, "Don't expect inspect." That's kind of what I'm getting at, that I want you to have really inspected and probed on these things. Not that you're not, but if you're not doing it, it gets pretty rote down below you, yeah. I need to get these, all these new tractors. It becomes easy, I'm just going to put this down. Did someone really challenge you? Did you really say this? I just want to be sure that's taking place. It's just kind of a management technique, maybe, but I don't want to create a lot of extra work for you. But I'd like to kind of know, what is this for and, you know, why do we need it? What is it? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Weir?
Thank you. I see that we're rescinding Resolution 80-97 tonight, and that's fine and well and good, but I don't see where-- are we adopting the calming thing in tonight's agenda?
Yes, we are.
And where is that?
Ray, could you point me to that?
Same resolution.
G.
Oh, it is in that same action, yes. Same item of reference, Councilmember.
Okay. Just so I can review this a little bit, I want to pull that item and vote on that separately, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Do any members of the council wish to recuse themselves from any item on the consent calendar? Do any members of the council wish to pull any other item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will make a motion to approve consent calendar items 7A through 7AK with the exception of 7G, with corrections amended by staff.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion was unanimously approved.
Thank you. Councilmember Weir?
Thank you. Instead of me looking for this, maybe you could just respond to me. What are we committing ourselves to right now, and how much is it costing?
Thank you, Councilmember Weir. We're not committing ourselves to any financial commitments today. I do think there are implied assumption that we're going to pursue projects to these treatments, but we're not approving any funding tonight.
So each project kind of stands on its own?
It does. I will recommend to council that, as referenced in the workshop at 3:30, that it's wise to look at some of the demonstration projects, I think, collectively. So we could say we're going to get a package of demonstration projects. Or in the CIP, I think we'll see, you know, several recommended projects in the CIP. So you might see batches, but outside of that, they would come, you know, one at a time to council.
As like separate projects?
Correct.
Okay. I move approval.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Oh, Vice Mayor?
I apologize, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify a few things. So, Mr. Clerk, when we approve this resolution tonight, we can also address some of the issues that were raised with regard to items specifically in the traffic calming handbook separately. Those two items I'm speaking about refer to the point system and also the public participation item.
Vice Mayor and Mayor and Council, correct, we can adopt the resolution tonight. It would adopt the full program, but what we would do as staff, if there were a motion to revisit those two areas, we would still, the full plan would be adopted tonight. Staff wouldn't move in those two areas until it's revisited, if that were the motion. And then ultimately, we would bring back this program at a future meeting once those portions had been revisited to adopt it again with those revisions.
Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion tonight to adopt the resolution, rescinding Resolution Number 80-97 and adopting a neighborhood traffic calming program with the caveat that we would revisit the point system as well as the public participation component.
Councilmember Smith?
I just feel that we're in agreement on the public participation component and that we could get past that by saying that, you know, we're not going to have a vote for however many people, but we are going to have public engagement so that then we can focus on the point system. And I think also was brought up, the demonstration projects were not included. If you could add those two things, Vice Mayor, I would appreciate it, if you're so--
So moved. So my motion then would be for the council to adopt the resolution, rescinding the Resolution Number 80-97 and adopting a neighborhood traffic calming program with the elimination of the public participation requirement by requiring public notification and participation and revisiting the point system.
You have a motion?
I'm sorry. Did I get that right?
And demonstration projects.
And the demonstration projects. Thank you.
Motion was unanimously approved.
Thank you. I just noticed that we have Representative from Assemblymember Jasmeet Bains's office. Welcome. Thank you for representing. We appreciate your being here. Next item, please.
Council and Mayor statements.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. There's been an ongoing issue in Ward 2, particularly as it relates to residents in East Bakersfield, in that many of the neighborhoods in Ward 2 are connected or right adjacent to county areas. And the need for annexation of East Bakersfield is becoming even more of an issue as we move on. Many residents do not know whether they live in the city or the county. When they respond, when they're asking for police response, they're met by a sheriff deputy. When they need fire assistance, they're not sure who's going to respond. And there are a number of issues related to standards and neighborhood infrastructure that's uneven in many of our neighborhoods. In fact, there are some properties in East Bakersfield where if you're in the kitchen, you're in the city, and if you're in the living room or the bedroom, you're in the county. And we need to, in my opinion, clean this all up. There's no reason in my mind why a neighborhood in Metro Bakersfield is part of the county and not included in the City of Bakersfield. It just makes more sense for everything to be included in Metro Bakersfield. In the City of Bakersfield, it's better government, it's good government. It's more efficient for the taxpayer that we have streamlined services. And I think it's something that we need to address head-on in the few years to come. And so I'd like to make a referral to staff that as we consider annexations further, that we take bold action at bringing in larger parts of East Bakersfield in the future. And then the second item, the second referral I want to make is, the council goals, I think, are good ones, and they are ones that we have established and we're working towards. And this year, for the benefit of the public, we've realigned our council committees to meet specific council goals. There is one council goal, though, that is not assigned to a specific committee, and I feel is better served by addressing it in a workshop format. And I'd like us to schedule a workshop to address the innovative and efficient city government goal so that we can see our work towards that goal and monitor our progress and get that scheduled sometime within the next-- and get that scheduled sometime within the next few months, this spring. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Corr.
Thank you, Mayor. So kind of thinking about the conversations we've had around safe neighborhoods, and thinking about safe routes to schools, and spending time with city staff, thinking through solutions around issues that residents brought up to me and continue to bring up. A lot seemed to intersect with issues that also affect school districts. And so safe routes to schools is something I'm thinking a lot about, especially with some of the clusters of schools that I have in Ward 7. But, you know, throughout the city, we seem to see those. So in the spirit of community engagement, I wanted to ask city staff if we could convene a meeting hosted by the city that brings staff, city staff and council, and local school districts that fall within city boundaries, to achieve one, an open channel of communication, hosted by the city, of course, and to achieve conversations around common land developments, especially with our general plan on the horizon, infrastructure and safety around schools, homelessness, particularly youth homelessness, and getting school district input as to the utilization of different funding available at the city that might intersect with safe routes to schools and other such monies that the city has. I'm not aware of such joint meetings that might be happening, but that are hosted especially by the city, but can take place between the council, city staff, local area school boards, and district administration. Just some possibilities there. I think it would be a great opportunity to introduce some of the work the city is also doing, especially something like this neighborhood toolkit around traffic calming that can be beneficial to schools and neighborhoods. So wanted to make that referral and request to city staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Corr. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Jenny, just a quick question. It breaks my heart not being able to respond to some of the folks who came tonight to talk about the challenges, you know, working in City Hall. Would you mind sending us an email to provide us some clarification? You know, I err on the side of caution in not wanting to infringe on any of the important and tough negotiations that are taking place. But if you could just shed some light, especially me as a newer council member, on what it is that, you know, we could potentially say in response to them that wouldn't be harmful.
Certainly. Mayor, Councilmember Arias. In fact, I was just speaking to the city manager about that. Maybe he'd like to address it, but I can certainly do that.
Yeah, thank you, city attorney, and thank you, Councilmember Mayor and Council. I would reflect a couple of important key points. One, it is not a best practice to negotiate in public. And so we're not inviting for there to be public negotiations. But I would reflect that as we have-- I would report that we have received proposals from our SEIU Local. We have made proposals to our SEIU Local. We're not waiting on the process. And in our engagements with SEIU Local, we have proposed rules of engagement that typically are common. When you go to a negotiating table, you agree that we're going to keep things confidential. We're not going to share things outside of the meetings. And I don't mean this as a particular discredit, but our partners at SEIU Local have said, we don't want to have a rules of engagement so that they can have regular dialogue with their membership. And so we're not under a requirement to not disclose the conversations that we have had, frankly, just to be candid. But again, there are best practices in not, you know, negotiating in public. But I would state for the public record that the city has, again, made proposals. And that I think it is fair to say that our proposals, you could make comparisons to the two labor partners that we are in contract with. We have a contract with the police union. We have a contract with a fire union. And we have made proposals that are consistent with the type of agreements that we have negotiated with those two groups. So I think it's fair for the public and our employees to know that there is, you know, significant consideration on the table. We're not holding that back. But we do need to continue to negotiate in good faith with our partners to finalize those, you know, final deals and arrangements. But I think your question is a good one, and it is fair for folks to know that, you know, we have been at the table, and it has been substantive conversation.
Thank you, City Manager Clegg. Councilmember Corr.
In closing, I wanted to make a statement honoring Black History Month. My own family was able to immigrate to the U.S. because of the 1965 Immigration and Nationality Act ending the immigration quota system designed to keep out immigrants. So I stand on the shoulders of communities, individuals, and martyrs within my own community's history, but especially of those in our nation who fought and persevered so my own family could find refuge, and my own Punjabi community could find safe refuge in places like Bakersfield, California. I have the right to vote, the right to full citizenship, the right to public schooling, and so much more, but especially the honor of being in office due to the struggles and strides of Black Americans in this nation. And so Black History Month gives me the opportunity to reflect on my shared American history. Though one month is not enough, you know, the commitment continues every day. I wanted to share two quotes from Black American academics and historians that have shaped my own consciousness as a first-generation young person who benefits from the many, many sacrifices and work of Black Americans in this country. So the first quote is by Bell Hooks, who shares an alma mater with me at UW-Madison. "Beloved community is formed not by the eradication of difference, but by its affirmation, and by each of us claiming the identities and cultural legacies that shape who we are and how we live in the world." And another academic, James Baldwin. "I am what time, circumstance, history have made me, certainly. But I'm also so much more than that, and so are we all." And so with that, just wanted to honor and celebrate Black History Month and take a moment while we can, and wish everyone a good rest of the week. Thank you, city staff, and to my colleagues for a really enriching conversation at this city council meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Corr. We stand adjourned at 6:19.